The May 7th Planning Board Meeting. This is a joint meeting with City Council Planning and Development Committee of the whole. We'll start with roll call for the Planning Board. Ryan Balton.
Here.
Tim Bluestein is not here. Alvin Clark.
Here.
Carolyn Palmasano.
Here.
Jamie Pennington.
Here.
Rick Tanquer.
Here.
Jack Lecare.
Here.
Matt Heffernan.
Here.
I'll see you again.
Thank you. So this is the Planning and Development Committee. With us here is Councilor Preston.
Hallison.
Councilor Preston and Councilor Harmon. And we also have Councilor Donahue present as well. We have two items on the agenda that we'll be working with for Planning Board tonight. First one is the ordinance 198, which is our signage regulations. Luckily, we have a sponsor here with us, Councilor Harmon. And then ordinance 202, which is the blood plane overlay district regulations, mainly FEMA from the Fed. And Councilor Preston is responsible for that. Lucky for us, though, that we're here. So we are ready to begin.
Thank you, Planning Board members, council members. I know I could talk over there, I talked fast. And so I will be brief with the overview of this ordinance change and also the FEMA one in a moment. Just briefly, if you have any questions, we can obviously unpack and explain further. But just to briefly explain the purpose of what's going on with this ordinance amendment. We're basically trying to establish the context for general science regulations, not just the amendment itself. This is covering just in general, and some of it's actually the particular changes we're making now. So this is really about having what we consider reasonable regulations. This is going back to sort of case law and language, of course, I use. But reasonable regulations of science based on their reasonable needs, you know, the typical averages that people would have, both for expression as well as commercial usage. So obviously, we're trying to accommodate those things in the city. But we are trying to address community character and things like visual clutter. Is a term that probably comes up. So that has a great bearing for its character, particularly in the historic areas. So we obviously care about that on the spectrum. But we need to balance those other things. So one thing that's very important to note here is that this ordinance amendment is dealing with what we call the parcel property in the city. So it's not dealing with right-of-way. Those are addressed by a general ordinance section, which could be addressed separately after this. We think that's a good idea. I'm happy to report the council on that piece of it because it does involve a couple of other pieces of the general ordinance. We did add a preamble about this new amendment, more clarification of where those other pieces are in the zoning, and a little bit more context to that preamble as well. The one of the primary things we wanted to do was update a more recent case law on signage, particularly around the free speech and expression. We have Eddie Singer here from RVSC2 in La Haye, who's helped us to take a look at the amendment. Has suggested a couple of edits, which I had pushed out earlier today. I'll speak to briefly, just to help with some of the language in there. And again, be as defensible as possible and consistent with the case law. So the rest of it is basically housekeeping changes for improved clarity or consistency between terms. A lot of it because we have the benefit of our zoning administrator, Jennifer LaShay being here this evening. She has to deal with these where this is quite fit in terms of clarifying what the requirements are for folks. And so clarification is helpful in that regard. Couple of highlights of the ordinance and the amendment. Generally speaking, the signage is distinguished by types. And so there's certain licenses for some of those. We also have some distinctions by zoning district that's allowed. And that's in the subsections. New provisions that I think are worth noting here, and this is relative to city properties, uses, and activities. It's appropriate changes, I think. These are all public facilities, so they swing from public at large. And we don't really currently have enough provisions in there to deal with these science types of signage that we need. So having facility signage, like the signage when we came into the senior community center this evening, High Street wave binding signage, so let me think of something instead of downtown this way, or, you know, the business parks that way, something like that. Not, we're not talking about individual business saves. We're talking about wave binding signage. We're talking about geographic locations, you know, marketing for tours and that sort of thing. Donor signage and banners on fences, these are just accommodation for some of the things that we see on recreational fields, where people are providing funds, helping facilities. It's reasonable to have recognition of those. So we tried to accommodate that in the ordinance amendment here, where there wasn't anything in the previous ordinance that accommodated that well enough. We also added some language in there, just clarifying relative yard size. And so the freedom of speech and expression that folks will have, you know, is the case where we have a question here and valid questions right now. So and then there's some minor edits since then that I'll speak to briefly, just based on input from legal counsel as well. Just again, approval asked of the department today. This is just the zoning matter of the city. If there's any questions, this just kind of shows, you can see some of the industrial areas in purple, businesses kind of reddish colors. And then you have the residential is largely yellow, agricultural is the green area. So there are some subsets of stipulations for that. Just a couple of graphics to go with some of the types of signage. And again, if there's further questions, I can speak to this. I think Jennifer, we, as zoning administrators, most of the types of signage that are permitted through this awareness would be going forward. So she can speak to some instances if there are questions about those. But there's a distinction here between traffic and directional and parking signage. Obviously, we're accommodating those. Those are necessary. So those are a different category, so to speak. An example of those. Free standing signs, thanks to McCarthy, by the way, who brought the city grabbing all these. So this is more closet, just an example of freestanding sign, could have been anywhere. But another one example, freestanding sign for commercial use. Generally speaking, today, freestanding signs are not permitted outside of the business park. So just as a bit of context, to go for a basis, we're not seeing those. I have the ordinance, it's a thing that's a lot outside of the area. The, another type of signage, banners, fences, some of these graphics, by the way, are very important. Some of them are just for illustrative purposes. So banners, this is Fuller Field, so again, example, so the right frame of the banners you might see there. One of the things that we've noted, suggests with some of these real tiers, perhaps just to protect the community character, Fuller Field and Low Street may not be the primary area of concern for us, say, on street or downtown. But whether these banners are acting as signs that face towards the street and become a big wall of signs versus things that are facing inward to a site. So that was something that we tried to address by allowing the banners, by allowing the recognition of some of these. Not necessarily encouraging it where it's up against the street and it's, you know, creating sort of a clutter, visual effect in that regard. Just a type of signage. Basically, the projecting signs, the typical ones that we like to see downtown, are the ones that people actually get their direction from. Seeing this down the street, they don't opt in as well, see the one direction wall. So this is just a snapshot of High Street. You can see the wall signs black on the building and some of the projecting signs sticking out. This is one of those freestanding signs, this facility just identified. We didn't currently have anything in this ordinance that's addressing this piece of it. So just making it very explicitly clear in the ordinance, there's a good reason for having these facility identification at each location. And so this clarifying allowance for that. This is a typical sort of format, we might expect these. Wave binding, these are, I'm sure, best examples of wave binding, but they're examples of sort of wave binding and reporting where you are as a geographic area of no or something like that. So a little bit of wave binding as an example, there are other examples. We wanted to clarify the issue for that for the city itself, not so much for the private city. Like the Tannery, where it's, the, down with it, there's a whole bunch of basically like a pole with, you know, different signs going down. The, that's not what we're talking about. You're really talking about geographic location. So this way, you don't just think it's important, like it's landmarked, because it's some sort of a destination in this part of our development and tourism, things like that, not marketing individual businesses. It's not meant to take place in things like A-frames and other things you have talked. Sorry, this is just the construction and real estate signs recognizing that construction signs, we have our own, private projects have theirs. And real estate signs are often there for good reason, they have to be there for marketing purposes. And so allowing, you know, codifying clearly enough an allowance for that. They often are there for longer period of time, say, three days because of the marketing of the developer or construction project. We've been at our own, of course. Just the type of random winning sign that we tried to allow, and this is an edit that was put in, set up earlier today, just as a suggestion. An allowance to suggest that we allow businesses when they're opening up to have a little bit of a temporary banner where the ordinance has originally sponsored and was submitted. We didn't have an allowance for that in here. We discussed the benefits of allowing a business service temporary allowance for something to be announced in that. But again, a short window, so allowing three days before, three days after, a window. But that's maybe longer than that. So again, all these policy level questions and details are up for folks discussion. But these are meant to allow the types of things that people might be willing to do on ballots. And then there's sort of ER political signs. Here we see, this is just an example of, you know, a whole slew of them on a property. But here, sort of setting up a reasonable cap, so to speak, of that. So five signs maximum, say, on a property, 10 square feet max at the size. Something that kind of caps it out so we don't end up with an extreme amount of clutter, you know, throughout the city, whatever you're doing. And so again, it's important to have a freedom of expression, obviously, with this. And I'll give a moment, Eddie, if you wanted to provide any comments or context as far as the sort of freedom of speech sort of aspect. We're trying to address here with more recent case law, just a bit of context, maybe, for folks.
Sure, so.
Sorry, do you mind if you could stand up and speak a little bit closer to this whole device to be at here? It's the microphone. It's this, if you don't want to stand up, just because of this.
Are they recording or anybody watching? Well, I'll. So as we, I just talked to Amy about this. So this report in 2015, really limited content-based signs, anything with words on it? Was there anything with words on it, basically? Anytime you have to read a sign to decide if it's allowed or not, that's probably going to be unconstitutional because it's limiting free speech. With residential areas, it gets even more strict because it's non-commercial signs. I'm sorry, they are considered non-commercial and they're considered residence. Again, this report just said that it's more of a space where people should have a right to say as they want and there's no other alternate avenues of how to express that. There is case law where signage was only allowed in residential districts in the windows. And that was like struck down as too restrictive. People should be allowed to express their views in ways where it's typical of yard signs. But what is allowed to be regulated is size, is the amount. Even color is allowed to be regulated. Anything besides the words on it could be regulated for aesthetic reasons and anything like that. So, yeah.
So as Eddie mentioned, we're trying, we're treading lightly with that area to recognize the case law and that expression. But obviously, trying to decide to think like, is it appropriate for this sign because it's tied to a commercial activity in that location versus, say, a business wants to advertise somewhere else in the city? That's going to create clutter, you know, confusion for folks as well. So really, we're trying to tie the plan uses of location and things like that. This is another type of sign, the amendment here, this is donor signs essentially. So if you're going to say Fuller Field, you see a sign recognizing this Fuller Field at entrance, it says this is Fuller Field, the facility you arrive at. But when you're leaving, you might see a sign that says, you know, this donations are provided by, this facility might be funded by. There was a desire there because we have so many facilities and our folks were nice enough to contribute. And entities are nice enough to contribute to allow that in the ordinance. Where the ordinance didn't clarify that the city can do those, the sort of freestanding signs. This was something else, the desire, and so we put a provision in to allow that. And this is just an example of that. So you see kind of, you know, diagram, like granite posts, and all between them, and that's recognition of those. And some middle standards for that as well. It's just in closing, sort of recommendation and next steps from the office anyway would be, after your discussion, if there's any further edits or concerns that folks have about recommending adoption of this zoning amendment, perhaps this amended committee, which is the diversion that I said earlier today, and I'll speak to in a moment. And then also, as a second step from this, this is something that Jennifer Parthi has been really good at coming in about over the years. He spends a lot of time, you probably know him, going around the city and picking up all the clutters of signs there in the right-of-way. That's the majority of where we see the clutter concern, I think, in the city. And so we, it does more just looking at the general ordinances and seeing what we can do to improve that. One of the concerns, though, that comes up is the amount of time or resources it might take to enforce and monitor that. Because folks are throwing up all over the city and somebody has to drive around and monitor that. So once we're a little more on top of that, and we've sort of notified what folks are doing on a regular basis, that becomes easier because they've got violation notices, they might be fined, you know, they're at the loop. There are smaller things that aren't going to happen on a regular basis, based on people not understanding the code as if they want to just throw up something in the toll booth. But the idea here is to make sure that we also have a little bit more enforcement in the right-of-way where this stuff pops up and actually has more of an impact in the area on the public realm. Because that's what people are seeing, that's that impact. So these are just other types of signage. Again, sort of the question of how many of these types of signs can we allow a whole grand city? How many banners do we have? You know, there's a difference between, again, the parcel property that we're talking about regulating here and banners and A-frames and things that could be in the public right-of-way. So that's just general context for the amendment. I did push out earlier today, and I'll speak very briefly to this. A couple of edits that we had talked about with legal counsel. There were a few other suggested, I combined in there, clarity. So just like the FEMA amendment, we'll talk about it after this. Suggested since the original sponsorship of the amendment, which we appreciate, all the responses this evening, Councilor Preston, Councilor Harmon, to make suggested edits to this, just a change of the title of the section. It's clarity, signage going from signage to signage regulation. Nothing significant. This was language from council, just suggesting better language here for parlaying of the court to do and how that works. So basically, if something is found by a final judgment of order at the court, that's where we might something invalid in this ordinance, but everything else still fails. That's pretty boiler sublimity language in ordinance. The next change, we just added a clarification that banner signs are really a type of temporary sign, just to tie those two together. Also, just adding, we're assigned to sort of permanently attached to the ground versus something that's temporary. Just again, a little bit more terminology. We wrote out the numbers in the text of the ordinance with more consistency. So the number 30 is in there, we wrote out 30, you know, parentheses, just for consistency. I will mention the other instances of that. Revised a couple of headers, just for greater clarity. Some of these were suggested by Joe Rattrick, one of our constituents, who's involved in some of the signage stuff. And then again, some revised verbiage from council, just for greater clarity. So when people are applying for permits, they have to use the materials that are listed in the ordinance so that the building office or the zoning administrator can see that they have the right materials to see the size of the sign, the dimensions, you know, materials like that. The, we adjusted some of the language just to match the sort of case law. So using language like, if a city official are doing something, they're reasonable discretion rather than sole or overly broad discretion to reject or approve something. We're just using language that's more consistent with the case law on that. And so obviously, the city official in this case is zoning administrator, building commissioner, forget it. Some reasonable latitude, but that's obviously, you know, mitigated by case law. There's another section here, we just add a little bit of verbiage to it, to the title of it. But in general regulation, all signs and specific regulations by zoning districts, just to elaborate on that in the title of the section. Wrote out some more numbers. There, some clarifying language, the sign here in this intersection. And again, another clarifying sentence. One thing that we did add in here is, this section is clarification. We talked about it since the original sponsorship, the potential benefit of allowing businesses that are opening a little bit of a window right before, right after they open, to sort of announce they're opening, and it's a brand opening, that thing. So here, we put it in there to allow that sort of thing to happen. What we saw on one of the slides there, again, a short duration, short window for those temporary types of signs, just to kind of draw a little bit more attention, primarily as an economic development tool. So for consideration, that addition. This piece, the piece that Eddie spoke to you earlier, this is the piece here in section 2C, where we just added a little clarity. We're trying to, I think, put some grammar outside boundaries, so to speak. I don't know how much clutter might populate there, but obviously, give sufficient latitude for folks to have that expression. So there might be some concerns or questions about any particular here. But we're trying to just allow that freedom without, that sort of non-commercial expression, without the need for, I think, it need to be sort of unlimited in some state, like you saw that example where it might be just another side. We don't really have, I think, significant issues like that in the city. I think we haven't seen a big number of those instances, so we're pretty good with that. But it's good to have grammar at the outside edge. Some more grammaticals or pretty minor language things. Clarifying some places in the downtown in the second here, that we don't want to have signs that are above that, you know, between that first floor and second floor, we don't go above that outside. The air, we want to keep it with that traditional shot that you see where it's above the first floor. So, so basic language like that. I would also clarify, some of what we did in this was, for Jennifer's identity, and the applicant's identity, take out another document that was referenced in the zoning ordinance. If you had a ray, the old redevelopment authority guidelines, we downtown, some of the ones we're trailing, they were cross-referenced and basically pull them into the zoning ordinance here. So people don't have to look in another document or find another document. But this is one of the things that happens when the ordinances are added to over time. They get, you know, clunky and things are referenced a bunch of places. So we were just taking out some of those cross-references and keeping this. Again, just some revised minor revision language based on legal counsel. Not really changing the substance. And then also, we did add at the end here in the second floor E, just the clarification, mainly because the business parks, larger properties that are of unusual configurations, they might have two franchises, you know, one on each street, allowing them to have potentially one freestanding sign for each of those franchises where it might be wrapped in a site. We clarified in the temporary section, temporary signature. Primarily, what we changed in that since the original sponsorship was just clarification relative to site, we complemented site signs, so things where it's an active construction site. The building commissioner and zoning administrator can see that there's an active construction site, they can see permits in place. And it's quite obvious that, you know, someone doing a project, a lot of those projects, even our own, last long within the six months, or 30 days, if reference here. So we have allowed some latitude for both the construction sites and that we've had in private sites that we might think of marketing any fire station recently, things like that, versus a real estate sign. So someone who was marketing property, it's quite understandable that they would have said doing so. And that might take longer to do that process, you know, the 180 days. So just allowing and codifying something in there rather than not addressing it and then having something where it seems like the zoning administrator needs to take away a sign, even though it's a completely reasonable sign, optics to have. So we can put something in there to address that. Everything else is, you know, it is, I'd say, relatively minor in nature. And I don't know unless folks want to unpack that, we can speak to that further. But that is in essence the zoning amendment and the types of tweaks that we have made to the ordinance. I do want to apologize for pushing out later today, the edits from the original sponsored version of this. We weren't able to put that out, we had to get some input from legal counsel before we could do that. And so we have that now in hand, that is this version, Eddie has reviewed that. And Eddie and Charis reviewed the version. Go back to.
Any initial questions or comments from the planning board?
Do you want to go through each person's comment, or do you want to go section by section?
Sectionize, it makes sense.
I'll start, just a very minor point. What is the difference between sign regulations and signage regulations? You changed the word sign to signage. I didn't know whether that's, there's something substantive about that change, or what is it, something just preferred?
I'm more than happy to. I just, to me, I don't see as much of a difference here, it's just a header from the section, so I am not wedded in one way or the other, per se.
I just prefer some term.
Just use, sorry. Yep, I feel issued with that in my.
In the definitions. Is there, does a banner flag include, does a banner sign include a flag sign? If somebody put up a flag, would that be considered a banner?
And I do want to give an opportunity for our zoning administrator, Jennifer, to try to determine, because you had to deal with some of this stuff before I could be dealing with this.
And I, I'll say that quick. I also like to ask legal counsel, since we have them here. We did take flags out because it is my understanding that flags, at least where they are, federal, state, no, that we, we had called them out separately in here. And we did remove that section. So if that's something we need to look further at, and to answer your question, I would really like to defer to legal counsel. We had specifically called those out previously and got rid of them. I'm not sure.
One of the photographs here was an open flag. And I didn't know whether that was, would be considered a banner.
I can say that the open flag is a banner. But I think that there's perhaps more conversation that needs to happen regarding that type of banner. Just real quick, I'll stick to it really quickly. So flags have to come out, which they are, a lot of case law about flags, a lot of it is, it is considered speech. It is considered content-based, even though there are no words on it. So there's a lot of room for allowing flags. What I did find is that flags can be limited by size, like the residential district, if they don't want to have like massive flags that be put in. Recommendation is to keep flags out, and leave that as a separate category.
Commercial flag could be treated the same as a government flag, you know what you're saying?
Commercial as in.
Like an open sign.
An open flag. That's a good question, if you want to treat the same, that could be considered banner? Or you have allowed, let us hold one, have a lot of open sign, right?
We do have a lot of here, but it's limited in size.
Right.
Yeah.
I think limiting size is allowed. Limiting size is allowed, it's not, that's not a problem. It's just not allowing any kind of political flag or anything like that, that would be an issue. So I think the commercial, the commercial ones can be limited in size. But if we limit a, if we limit the commercial flag, we also would be limiting the size of the, of any kind of flag. Is that not? Well, open flag, a flag that says open is in there as a separate category. You want to, I don't have those covered, my four sections in.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of people who choose to square foot inside a window. Yeah.
There's also open flags that stick out.
Right.
As well.
Okay.
This is just.
Craig, I think it's a great question, and I think we, it requires.
So similar is the question of freestanding sign. And I know this is an existing definition, but do we not allow monument signs? Freestanding sign is only supported by poles and doesn't say anything about. You're a kid, a monument sign, flush to the ground without any vertical supports.
The vertical support, it is a freestanding sign, a monument sign is a form of a freestanding sign.
But it doesn't have any uprights. It defines a freestanding sign as being supported by.
The upright is the entirety of.
The surface would be considered.
The whole. If we need to clarify that, we can clarify that, but that has always been the interpretation.
The fact that it's embedded, so to speak, I think, in that, almost, right? It's like a wall, a stone wall, I have that in there, and it is a formal, I mean, and I think we consider that to be maybe.
So seriously, it's how you consider, I interpret. Do you?
Yeah, I think that's how we interpret that one.
We generally don't see them because the overall sign area is calculated by the rectangle that's inscribed around it. And if you wanted to do that kind of a monument sign, your sign all of a sudden, very quickly, gets too large.
I'm just thinking about, sometimes we have sign that identifies as a subdivision or something. It's a monument sign rather than freestanding.
We actually don't have allowance for it, because it's a bigger report.
That's all I have on definitions. Maybe, I don't know if you want to talk about any definition questions.
So are we going to continue to get input on the flag definition? Okay, thank you. So moving on to section 8B.
In D?
B is a void. After definitions, for my requirements for all signs. Section 8C.
Just to go back to definitions. Something that we discussed that I think is worth calling out for this group. Definition under temporary sign on the timeframe, so we are limiting these to 30 days or less. But in any event, for more than 180 days. So like, in the spirit of how it's written, hypothetically, you would need to take your sign down for one day after 30 days and then put it back up, for example, during election season. We don't expect, you know, the zoning administrator to enforce that, but I thought like it's weird enough to call out or this group to, you know, weigh in on it. Did I get that right?
It is correct. It allows for the election season to happen and the signs to be up. And yet, for the most part, it limits people who might be having another kind of a commercial type of sign. It limits them to 30 days. If they wanted to use the same rule, yes, they would, but generally, we don't see that. It's generally the political, the local political signs that we see. State and municipal that we see utilizing that power here.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilor Harmon. So going back to section 8C, nullification, any comments? All right, 8D, they're all reds?
The. The, um. Under H. The only new freestanding signs that are permitted are in the industrial park, industrial park properties. And so this means that if a, if an existing sign in the business district, a story avenue or something. Um, would prefer to replace a larger sign with a smaller sign. They couldn't do that, it'd be a variance to do that, because that would be a new sign.
But this is saying no new signs, I think a replacement sign might be a different situation, they're replacing the existing sign, so I do.
Maybe you want to clarify that because.
Yeah, there's, there's a bit of, I think we do, because there's a bit of language later that speaks to replacement and limits that.
I think we'd like, if we, what do you mean for a maximum ten feet? And I think we would want to allow them to do that.
Yes.
To replace a bigger sign.
Sorry, Jennifer, can you clarify what we are thinking for?
Um, there was a section that was added, um, app that talks about removing and reconstructing of signs.
Yep.
And we would not to allow. Pre-existing non-conforming sign to be altered in such a manner. Um, in, in the same location, but at a smaller size.
See, meaning as opposed to using the words uh enlarged or modified, you're basically saying it can also be replaced.
Can relate, be replaced, yes.
Yeah, okay. So that can be added in section F, is that, Rick, does that, your sense that that would address our concern or?
Well, I just think that it might, we want to make sure we don't have conflicting provisions, if this says new even. Maybe new, it, it would maybe refer to that, except as allowed somewhere else.
Yeah. So is it not a large or significantly altered? Making it smaller, making it smaller can be considered significantly altered?
We're making comments, Jennifer.
I've, given the language that was in here, that prohibited it outright. I would want to clarify to allow what Rick Peter has suggested. Because there is, um, at least in my reading, and we haven't confessed this, so if I'm speaking, um, I'd like to be corrected, but. Uh, there was some case law where a car dealership came back and wanted to alter their existing non-conforming car dealership sign. To make it smaller and with a new car dealership name. And they, they did prevail to allow, so we had some language that was overly. Restrictive, and so I think it's important to, to clarify with this new language to allow.
Are you going to make that at um section D, H? Probably the word is making, are you going to do it in another section?
I would defer to Andy on what he was.
Yeah, I'm still thinking about that one, but I agree that somewhere between F and here, we should give that some language for now.
Great. Thank you, David. Anything else in this section?
Um, well, turning on to the next page of your residential. That new provision. Um, I've got fifty feet of space in front of my house. If this would allow me to put five, ten foot square signs, ten feet high, because they're freestanding. So, they're not freestanding?
No, a temporary sign is different that.
It's the same temporary, because yard sign, non-commercial yard sign.
Uh, yard signs are defined earlier. Yeah.
Okay, so they would have to be, but they can be, they, it's still, it's ten feet, fifty square feet of signage in front of my house, seems pretty acceptable.
Well, yeah, I. But an aesthetic perspective, I agree with the idea of limiting and, you know, I'm urging that as much as possible. I do think, I mean, this is partly a question back to council, partly a policy question, and you know, part of the ceiling, but. To what degree, how much latitude do we want to allow in certain areas? I think, Eddie, you mentioned, you know, size is something that can be regulated, but we also know based on the case law, I think that um if we're too restrictive on both sides and or. Number of signs, it might be too restrictive. And we, I don't know if we can say exactly where they fall in terms of the particulars here, you know, in our ordinance. Um, it may depend on the, you know, particulars we end up adopting here, but we don't want to go too far by saying, for instance, only one sign. I think we, we sort of discussed that one sign, you know, might be too little to allow, so I don't know, any of you can offer anything on that.
I'm trying to, in six, typically yard signs seem to be more like three by two.
Yeah, and I'm more than happy myself with the idea of shrinking that, you know, size or whatever.
We're getting the freestanding.
Well, I'm just talking about the yard sign, this is allowing five, ten foot square yard signs.
Right.
No matter the width or the depth.
The, and the ten square feet, by the way, just to clarify, this is actually just to parallel the temporary uh signs that rocks elsewhere in the ordinance. Not because I necessarily, for instance, there's a part of a huge, you know.
I, I can, I'm going to clarify for council here, um. I think Rick Peter was asking, were yard signs considered freestanding signs? And my answer is no, because if you read the definition of a freestanding sign, it says permanently attached to the ground. And that, that's why we have a separate definition of the yard sign, which is a temporary sign, so.
And a temporary sign is, is limited, is that, how, how is that time limited?
Because.
You're back to the thirty days.
So this, the, the two C is limited, the same thing as the thirty days?
Or a hundred and eighty days, yeah, under the definition of temporary sign.
That would be, that would be allowed, but time wise, so the only time it is, is considered too short for residential districts would be, what I've seen is like. Thirty days after election and it has to be gone, that's too short. So giving um, yard signs calling temporary signs left for the third day or a hundred, one hundred and eighty days in a following period, which is. Which would be considered reasonable. And also with the five non-commercial yard signs that I make, that would be including, what I understand, correct if I'm wrong. Signs that say, you know, no trespassing or things like that, I'm not sure if that's allowed.
That, that wouldn't be a temporary, it's usually a permanent.
That's true.
So where does it say, where is the time limited for this sign, these, these non-commercial yard signs in residential?
The definition of yard points to temporary, temporary, where you see the definition of the thirty day, not eighty day windows.
So thirty days or less, eighty one time.
Right.
Well, but, but to Councilor Harmon's point. We, you can put it up for thirty days. And then you can put it up for the next thirty days, but when you get to day a hundred and eighty, you're all done.
Well, so just. And I'm not necessarily opposed to this, but just so we understand that you could have this for the entire spring and summer. And.
Yes.
And it would, it would appear to be a permanent sign, that's, that's fine, but I just am concerned about the size, the size of number.
Councilwoman Herman?
I. Not disagreeing, I have the same question in reviewing the edits, uh, was this the intent? I think the, as a, you know, amendment for consideration, the thought was, Andy Director said. To start with something that's not overly restrictive, um. Not that I think anyone does in this, I, I do think I've seen during political seasons, you know, five signs. Across the city in multiple yards, um, but we do have eleven city councils, one mayor, three school committees for a solid election. So five is, is limiting compared to, you know, what, what one might want to endorse with their uh law. Um, I do think there's, um, I thought that ten by ten, you know, for consistency's sake, uh, made sense. But I think we're open to adjusting that to something smaller. Um, I would note that we have banners around town now that would not be permissible. In the future elections, so I think that there will be an education component. Around, you know, making this change, what people's assumption, what they may have historically done with their yard signs. In many, many, many elections past that might longer be um available to them, but I, I take your point, I have the same question. It seems, seems excessive, I also have a decent amount of frontage, I wouldn't be able to see the street if I did this. Um, so I think, you know, it's, it's questionable what people would actually do in reality versus trying to craft something that um gets right with um the case.
Like, you know, when you drive around New Hampshire, you can see huge political signs, I don't, I have a new report.
Great.
We, we all agree on that one.
And I, I believe if I'm correct, but this is smaller than what is, you know, potentially allowable today by ten by ten.
Yeah, the, the ten square feet uh surface area, and that's pointing back to the temporary side of size, not like the large construction site signs that we've seen, right? So it's pointing back to the smallest, I, 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 I agree with your notion of perhaps it could be a smaller sort of your size. I'd be fine with that myself, uh, but again, I think it would like, better with pointing out is, it really, it goes back a little bit to balancing out those, so maybe we can talk more, decide if there's some sort.
But we might, you know, when you think about it, basically I could cover my entire yard with continuous set of.
What do we, that's a zoning, that's fair to speak.
Well, because I sat at the meeting where we discussed this and, and unfortunately, the circumstances weren't such that I looked at this before standing here, so. Didn't just check with legal counsel. I think the goal was to allow a sign or some, some expression that was maybe larger, but maybe not that all of them needed to be that large. So we do, if we wanted to specify. And, you know, and, and a maximum square footage total, allowing one to be larger size. We can get that specific, which I think gets to your concern and the flexibility that the sponsor was trying to achieve.
I think that sounds brilliant.
And if that's the case, that folks are comfortable with that approach, and I guess my question via many, just because Eddie's here with us. Just to talk briefly about what we think if there's a threshold for that size, just so we're sort of on the same page. If there's any thoughts about what that number would be, is it, you know, what's that tall square footage that the signs might allow here, just so if we're leaving. Uh, and have sort of a thought as to what this might be.
There's no, there's no legal restraint on that, it, you know, there's the balance of the aesthetic and the clutter and the cities, um, you know. You know, wish not to have that cluttered look and freedom of speech is all you have to keep thinking about. And as long as you're allowing that freedom of speech and leaving it open to a reasonable amount of sign, um, I think the. The size of it doesn't really, it's simply often more. Regulated how, you know. How big or small.
Thank you, Councilor Donahue.
Thank you, Chair, um, so to. To Councilor Herman's point, to play a little bit of duck back in. With election seasons, um, and given that, that, you know. You have eleven city councilors, the mayor, always three school, three potential. Duck questions, um, at any given number of years. Um, is by maybe eliminating, you know, a person with a large frontage, reasonable expectation to be able to support. The vote in the, you know. Um, selections in terms of how many there are to choose, so, um. It, to me, does back in question if I, this is a breaking number. Across the board because it does, so I just, that, I mean, size, I understand. I do agree with that, there is the delineation between large and, you know, up to the size, you know, one size. Um, but I do think it makes question, it is, is fine.
No, it's valid, a very valid point, especially during the election season.
Councilwoman Herman?
I do, I think, you know, based on this discussion, I think a square footage on, in, in total, maybe. To allow for one larger format or multiple smaller format um signs. I think we'd like to potentially take a look at that math and come up with a recommendation.
I'd agree, yeah, just wondering if there's any sentiment right now from folks about what they think that maximum size would be.
Like, for instance, is the ten square foot, we allow one single ten square foot sign. Which is. Two by five, you know, for, you know, argument sake. Um, where traditionally yard sign, I think, is two by three, so six square feet. It's not that much larger, but it's almost double.
They're not that big.
I got one in my car.
But I keep them up, some, some are bigger than others, so I think it, it's worth continuing the conversation, I think.
Let, let's see what, how, what the actual standard size is and then.
Measure some stuff and then come back.
No, I was just, you, you might be able to get away from, maybe put a, a maximum ten square feet per sign. But seven as a maximum total square footage, be one square foot for every linear frontage. So that a house with a lot of frontages, Councilor Donahue said, could have more signs, but houses with very little frontage, yeah, a few are.
I like that notion as well, because I, I think the idea of having one large sign, the one example I use actually is the CBS page, I've heard this one before, but. The CBS sign in the bar from our house, if we had the old sign, you might recall, those folks might recall, used to have a, a band of text, you know, four or five bands of text. And it was smaller font, wasn't quite as bright at the time, but wasn't quite as, you know, noticeable as they developed, but they made it a giant white surface area and it becomes more of a billboard. That's more noticeable, I think, it feels more like a billboard, even just that one sign being so large compared to say a couple smaller ones. So I, I like the notion of, you know, setting a cap of a number, potentially, uh, I realize that maybe that's not the right number and certainly debatable. I think the idea was just to avoid the clutter like we saw in graphic that we had a moment ago, uh, where someone just inundates the entire frontage of their property with it. But, uh, at the same time, I think setting a cap of, of that size would be beneficial.
Councilor Preston?
Yeah, so it occurs to me, and I certainly understand the notion, and, you know, I, I don't want more clutter, but I also don't love the inequity of. I have a small frontage and therefore I have less political free speech, right? Um, I can't ha, I, I can only endorse so many candidates or ballot questions or whatever it may be. Because I, I just happen to have less frontage, I might have a huge, long lot that goes back, but I don't have so much frontage, so I don't love the inequity of that.
And that's what it works, because that is um, no link speech by something that's um, particularly well and it's the wood of work. It should be across all.
She's in green.
To your core.
Not like, but I think using the maximum square footage as a question number, as a number does. Yeah, but then how to figure out, you know, how one maximum.
Yeah.
So Jenny, you, you thought eighty-five was too limiting? You know, we have a, we have a group here, it's worth.
As much feedback as possible, that's all.
Yes, so what is, what is a better number, and then we can work our way into what the square footage, so.
Well, I mean, yeah, at, at the top of my head, like, I would say ten is just under.
Yeah.
Like that, that wouldn't include a very bad question.
Ten signs?
Yeah, but I'm talking about your standard eighteen by nine four, which sign is not, that, that's a, that's a two. Foot wide by a foot and a half tall, plus H frame, you know, wider.
That doesn't count height.
It's just the surface area, it's just the size.
You know, um, that is, that is less than, you know, two by a foot and a half, um, so. And then the next size that you see for political signs is the slightly larger, six five. And why is it twenty four? Then you have a two by two. Um, and. If you have, yeah, high that large at minimum, you know, in a busy election, if it's more than that. Somebody may very well want to have five.
Right.
There are also, you know, if the word is that, if contested race, they may want to have rewards. If it's a, um, to, you know, contested for work, candidates for school committee. It's a Bay Area and contested in my. You know, so.
So you have to ten.
That's exactly, it doesn't even include that.
If you have ten, excuse me, at the, the three square feet, as Jenny says, the, the standard. And if you want to, you want to speak to ten issues, then, then that's only thirty square feet, I mean, we're. We, we can put a pretty low limit on it and still enable someone to, to address a lot of.
Yeah, as long as it includes the cap.
And once you say thirty square feet maximum. Or, and, and with no, oh, once, you know.
No, no sign exceeding.
Yeah, no one sign exceeding ten square feet.
Yeah.
So you could have three large signs or. You also, you know, ten smalls.
One, one other thing to remember. Political signs are a very small portion of this board display, so we're not going to have a hundred and eighty days of political science. And there's going to be a lot of other, this allows a lot of other, other signs.
Except if you really look around, there are very, you know, short of those associated with construction project. Um, very few people are actually willing to, at least in new report. Um, are willing to clutter their yards with. These other kinds of signs, it may, it may be that they're, they want to address an issue, not, not an election, but an, an issue. And they may keep something up, um.
But but when those issues come up, there is, there is, you'll see on every port.
You will see.
As many as something put in there.
You will, and and therefore those are permissible.
Covered, but covered under the same.
Yes.
Same.
Yes.
Hundred eighty, there you go.
What, what, sorry, but don't forget for political stuff, we are limited to what we can put up and we have to take them down.
Not under.
Well, for political, but under mass general law for elections, we are, we are restricted to when we can put signs.
The candidate, is the candidate you're limited?
Yeah.
Or aside from any of the regulations, it's not.
We can, we will certainly go back and check with the clerk's office, but there is a specific date when you can start putting signs up. And you have to, it's supposed to take them down the day.
A candidate distinguished from the individual property owners that we're talking about, Andy, is that?
Definitely, yeah. I don't know about that. So it's definitely for residential town, they're going to take it down next day.
But you can, you.
I, okay, we need to find out from the clerk's office.
You, there is something on file in the clerk's office, which I think is an old attempt to be consistent with our other city ordinances, and we should, like, we need to reconcile the general ordinances. We also need to reconcile that document that tells you the dates that you can't camp when signed up with current. Councilor Donahue and then Councilor.
Um, right, so would it be worth just, you know, denoting, um, no duplicates? Or is that black?
Can't do that.
They can't do that. Or or denoting just, you know, elections being, you know.
Can't do that.
All right, Councilor Herman.
I was just gonna follow up, um, Jennifer, the, we, I'm aware we need to update the general ordinance. Is the assumption that because of the same case law, we will be limited in our ability to regulate political signs if it is?
It's a little bit different with use of public property and, and I don't mean to just be that briefly here. It's a different ordinance, obviously, in context, but the general ordinance is dealing with it right away a lot, and so there's a slightly different, uh, allowances and treatment there.
Right now, if those signs aren't allowed in public property.
Okay.
We just take them down.
Right, but.
We can't, we put them there.
But in terms of the expression side, there's many distinction there, that's true.
Yeah, my question is, so we we have an assumption, we need to figure out the details around that political campaigns have their own requirements for when things can go up and when things have to come down. If that is based on our local general ordinance, it or it would seem to me that we would also need to modify that to make it easier and and less restrictive. So it's not solving the problem as we talked about this preponderance of signs and square footage.
Or is it a statement?
Or is it a state of that? My question is.
Question we need to find out. Think that the document that you're referring to may just be maybe, I don't even think it's regulated by ordinance. I think that the document that when you take your papers out.
Yeah.
That has that statement at the bottom may just need to be updated and it doesn't require. It just requires making it consistent with current uh, law and law and.
All right, so now find out what that regulation is for us.
Just one further clarification of this, these signs are all hindernets, right? They're not in the, all these have.
Right, the A frames and the strips of the grass, I think that's a totally separate conversation.
So are any of these signs have to be hindernets, I wonder?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
So go to, we are judged with page five, anything on page six? Councilor Preston.
Yeah, so I have a question about, sorry, where am I, uh, four E. So there are businesses, um, in the business park that have more than, well, there are buildings that have more than one business in a building. So, you know, I work out at Fuel. Fuel has three different businesses in that particular building. So if we are only allowing for one free sign, freestanding sign there, is that equitable to the three businesses in that building?
Right, I think the assumption is that probably, you know, maintenance in that building is going to consolidate and need to provide the ordinance for the size area. But accommodating.
Three different businesses in there. What about something like the firehouse in the Philo downtown?
Like, a little bit different, they're laying the parts, and one might want to do like a very large, go back and appear like a giant key type thing that never came forward, but the, uh, unless, so that's, there's a, so, right, so I'm not sure.
Well, I, I, Belem and Firehouse, I'll be.
But, thank you. Building signage, you're still allowed to have a sign on the building that advertises each of the the businesses within it.
So it's a freestanding.
This is just the freestanding one at the street and Fuel, that location is actually one that caused this, the need to clarify is because each of the businesses chose to put up their own freestanding sign. Really, the freestanding sign is meant to identify the building. This is eighty, whatever the address is, and and you go in, then once you get onto the property, you you then look at the signage of the building to know which one to go to. Now, if a building owner chose to allow each of the businesses to, you know, it's got three businesses in the building and you want to put three placards within one sign, you you could do that.
So on the same note, so, you know, again, they like to advertise, we're running a special for a certain thing. So that would no longer be available to.
If they get a permit through city council to do a temporary A-frame sign to advertise that type of thing, then.
So an A-frame would still be allowable.
If if they continue to be allowed in those locations, then.
Um, yes.
All right, but that, I think that was a sign, you know, where theirs are closer to the, those are within the right of way.
Yeah.
Those are not regulated by the zoning ordinance.
And those are going to be counted for the station.
Right.
Sorry, going back just a little bit, but, um, banner signage, one in four, um, this is the new thing, um, so one in, um, page five, yes, right in the middle, um. So this, these are banners. Um, we we have banners on, um, you know, municipal property banners and ball fields banners, um, uh, and right of way don't matter in this ordinance. And then this allows for businesses to promote a grand opening only. Uh, and so I just, it struck me that is that too limiting in terms of purposes that a business may want to have a banner out for a temporary thing? An event, anniversary, I I don't know, but I, it just struck me that this might be narrow, um, putting it out there for I think, too.
I'm glad you thought that. I did, this is a little ahead, I would like to look at the document like what we do.
So to Councilor Herman's point, I was actually thinking about that earlier, since, uh, it may not be used for longer than thirty days before or opening day, does that, does that mean sixty days?
Sixty days, yeah, it's, they're according, yeah.
Also on banners, um, on the N one first, facing banner signs on municipal properties, it says may be permitted in accordance with this section approved by the city agency. Does, is in accordance with this section necessary or?
Oh, yeah, that can be deleted.
I think you have to pick that up.
All right. Go back to six, okay. Page six again.
Before A, I think that is now superfluous because you've added it as a general regulation on page and what else? Okay, I've added the, the paragraph E, add a new thing for, for all freestanding signs. So I think you could take out this four A because it's already addressed. In page six, heading four A, there's no freestanding signs, so it's either headed ten feet.
I forgot.
It's covered up, sorry, on page four.
D Y E.
The freestanding signs were permitted and limited to ten feet maximum height. So I think you're duplicating, I don't just think you're.
But all.
This applies to everyone. Yeah.
In essence, the the language that Rick is suggesting is old language, it was the ordinance being on that particular district of the city, and we added language in the generic section applying to all signs, so Rick is saying, you don't need a net section.
They're all limited to ten feet, not just the ones in the.
And I have a question about B. Um, so this is saying, it sounds like it's saying that it has to be, it can be set far back from the street. It can, it has to be close to, close enough to the street.
This is the language that was there?
I know, I'm just, if if you should be facing me, what's the purpose of it, I guess? This.
I just think it is.
Oftentimes, it's a, it should be not less than a certain length of the street, but this says it can, it has to be at least, it can't be more than a certain.
Jennifer's right, this is a pre-existing part. I think I agree that it's debatable as to whether that's needed or, you know, like inverted, but that's, that's been on the books for some time.
So it seems like they wanted it to be, to see that, say that it was visible from the street, so. It's pretty bright, that's what it seemed to be. I didn't want to give this as a regular.
Really, Rick, the typical picture is the inverse of that, but they might have done this with this here in forty.
I would have no issue with getting rid of it if that was. I don't know if there's someone in the community that feels strongly about it, and therefore I think we just chose to leave it and what are unjust enough.
And and in this regard, this is kind of a unique situation, but I think you showed it on one of your slides, Andy. You've got that fourth plaza structure in the middle of the plaza. And that is a, that's a sign, and that's, you know, well beyond a certain distance. And I guess the question is, do we care? Would would we, is there any reason why we wouldn't want to have that? You know, part of the design of the plaza, this is basically saying somebody couldn't do something if they were reading all of it to us.
I think, Jennifer said, I agree, I don't, I wouldn't have any part of the stipulation that the new ordinance are having on the books first, it's not, I mean, what you raise, I think.
It was a leaky.
I think generically speaking, we're probably not as concerned about signs in the interior of the property as we are about the one on the outside, right? So, yeah, um, but again, it's not a lot, quite a different concern, particularly, but I make it agree. Front and underneath have worst impact, I guess, like, right? If you remove it, there isn't, is there really an adverse impact? Probably not, right, so. Actually, it's good to remove that stipulation.
Is there, is there anywhere in ordinance, I may have, I didn't see it, a minimum setback for signs?
Uh, there is, would the, uh, I think at least in a lot of the subject, medical signage, um, as such, signs would not be within twenty feet of any property line.
That was regulatory signage, I think.
I'm just wondering whether, whether, whether the regulations now allow freestanding sign to be within the front property.
I do not know of any limitation, uh, regarding proximity to a lot line other than the obstructing, uh, visibility to rat race or things like that, um, which we would review as part of site plan review, and if someone were putting in a new sign, it wasn't site plan review, it's something I look at that actually gets to your monument style sign, is that you can't have solid surfaces between a certain dimension right adjacent. Other than that, I don't know of one. Councilor Preston.
Yeah, I would just, again, you know, so I live in South Bend and my my ability to put a sign in front of my, I may need to paint the clearance between my house and the sidewalk, and I would hate to limit that because then, again, it would limit my ability to mind free speech and my ability to endorse something.
But this doesn't apply, it was, I mean, this is a permanent sign, and it really would mostly apply in story avenue or business. I'm just wondering whether we do want to have something that says a sign should be.
I actually wonder if this old language before it was tweaked was trying to do just that.
Yeah.
Um, it was unclear, and maybe, maybe in the tweaking it, it got
reversed.
Reversed.
Yeah. It could.
And this, this language is the ordinance language that's bound to us, so. Knew that we had permission.
Right, but but I'm just saying, in our interpretation, it's that shall be placed no more than one half of the required setback. So maybe that meant no closer than, and maybe we're all just reading it.
Reading the original language might have been, been really to achieve the intent.
Yes, I mean, that's what I'm saying, we may have been misinterpreting the original intent. It may have been intended to say you can't put it closer than one half of the setback.
I think that's consistent with, yeah, I agree, I think that's consistent with what Rick was getting at, is that it probably was just worded, the inverse was worded, even though the intent was probably to say, it must be at least that far back, so.
Except I would question that because where we have a fifty-foot setback to require someone to put the sign twenty-five feet back is too much. So I still think that that language is not the, what we want to proceed with. But I, I.
I guess I'm not hearing anybody say a good reason for keeping that B, so I just wonder, is it, if everybody's comfortable removing a stipulation that isn't really doing anything, right? Probably.
Anything else on page six? Page seven.
Thank you. Again, and it relates to my earlier comment about banners, it's just the event signs are here. We specify the uses for signs above, meaning it to construction development. Um, but we see a lot of event signs.
I I do have one question. I I noted you added in all districts here. I think we address residential property, residential properties elsewhere. I was confused by.
The, uh.
The temporary sign.
Yeah, no, no, I'm sorry, what was the earlier, uh?
Where we deal with the allowing for temporary signs and the five, the, the five maximum and.
Yeah.
Where is that?
Right here.
Page five, two C, yeah, page five, C.
Could leave that additional phrase, and that, and that's the, it just hurt. But in the, in all districts is that.
If they're consistent, then it's no issue.
Well, a question of this one, this one doesn't say non-commercial, so residential is non-commercial.
This is my. They, they need to be reconciled.
Yes, yeah. It's, it's almost as if the. It's, it's almost as if the temporary sign piece, that residential piece has been added, removed into this section, just restrict the residential signs to non-commercial. Because this is commercial and non-commercial. So, thank you.
That is the right spot.
So, um. This paragraph, again, this comes down to coordinating the two sections. This paragraph talks about such signs and talks about active real estate marketing for. And I was wondering whether in the residential section, is there a provision for real estate sit for sale of lease to allow that to happen in a residential district? Where, because that says non-commercial, this one encompasses for rented lease. So it's, it's an interesting thing, maybe, maybe there should be some, non-commercial sounds near that it excludes for rented lease. So, I, I would think about, thinking, try to coordinate again that residential with the other district.
Sorry, Rick, this E section E here, this is referring to all signs, right? Because if you're, that is, is a construction project or an active real estate marketing, you're, you're saying in a real, you know.
I'm saying in the resident, so this one, if you, if you include this to say all districts, then this allows all sorts of signs, all sorts of temporary signs. In addition to the non-commercial signs that are around residential.
Is this supposed to be commercial, um, commercial, temporary commercial signs in all districts?
It doesn't say, no.
You're saying rhetorically, because.
I'm asking you because I.
If you wrap it up, if you wrap it up, commercial, you might. Adding a word, commercial.
Yeah, but you don't want to restrict non-commercial.
Well, we, we'll, we'll allow that, the residential.
The, the business district, should the business district be allowed?
Do they, businesses have the same, right?
Yeah.
They have all right, because less than residential, so.
But I don't think you can restrict a non-commercial speech in the business.
I think we need to meld these two sections into one.
But you're thinking, what you're talking about here is essentially tiling that temporary commercial signs to just, as a sign.
And then there are two subcategories, one is in residential districts, and then there's another one that talks about these.
For, so one might be in all districts, and one might be in residential.
Yeah.
I just want to comment to your complaint about site signs. Um, I would add the words such as active construction zone, because the word site sign is actually recommended, um. Like, that's what the court actually recommended using, because it allows for different, like, side signs, like, you have a big sale, there's side signs, you want to do it that way. Um, but active construction and real estate marketable, um, should be allowed for. So, yeah, words such as, we're so good with, we're limiting it and.
Let me ask, just following up on that, should we have a definition for site signs, to say what a site signs? Would that be added to the, this definition for the use of term?
We can clarify the traditional language, but I think it'd be parallel with the, uh, the active construction or development site, real estate marketing, I pay you, I don't know if you want to. If that's not happening, really just repeat, so, all to what's already described.
I'm just thinking, if you're adding such as, then, then the site sign doesn't have anything to do with it, it's just one, those are examples of site signs, but it doesn't restrict with the other sites.
If you're not adding word site signs, then they're restricting it to real estate and to, um, with the whole construction. And I think there, those two issues, construction and real estate, has been a lot used over there, so I think it's supposed to have it in there as an allowance for it. And I think that word site sign opens it up to some limited. I don't, I think one counts without the other, and it's not really redundant, it seem like it, but.
I don't think it's redundant, I'm just thinking that it's, it's very expensive, when you have the words such as. Um, I'm just wondering what a site sign is. Because a site sign.
It's going to be added.
You're trying to add it.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's defined site, if you can use a term. And then you could, then you could, you could do a similar definition.
Again. One, one small point back on, on transition from page four to page five, under the, the eight D. They, you know, would the sections be re-labeled, says there's no K, it goes I, J, L. Are we, are we missing something? By, I'm solving page four. K is missing.
Yes.
Right there. And the next one is.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Thank you. Talking earlier about the non-conforming signs, that people redoing or replacing, so, you know, when that gets inserted here, covered in this section, it's like, you get a second, that's the way to address. Not looking at the issue of this.
With the public comment?
Thank you.
With the open public comment?
You need me to come up here, my logbook? Stand here, uh, and can we just clarify process, am I allowed to ask questions or just provide comment?
Just comment, name and address, please.
Okay, Paul Rosa, Eight Wildwood Drive in Newburyport. Um, I will phrase my comments, my questions in the formal comments, I have four of them. Okay, um. All right, uh, first question or comment, I should say, in the text, there are two references to what's called municipal, municipal property and city-owned property. I don't know the distinction between the two, but I have a specific interest in a property that I believe is city-owned, I don't know if that's considered municipal. But the, the paragraph H under the general regulation says, no new freestanding signs on properties other than municipal property. And the property that I'm interested in, which I'll explain in just a moment, is a city-owned property, I don't know what that means. Um, the second question, I have a comment, I should say, uh, I'm curious if there is a difference between a non-regulatory sign as it's defined in the, in the ordinance, and I don't know what the correct term is, but an entrance sign. So we showed Fuller Field earlier, that is the property I'm interested in, Fuller Field has a sign at the entrance, I consider that an entrance sign. Um, we are interested in putting a sponsor sign to recognize the many sponsors who contributed hundreds of thousands of dollars to the property, and have been unable to recognize them for ten years. And I want to make sure that this ordinance does not, the way that's warranted does not permit, or it's not exclude us being able to put up that sign, uh, because it is a non-regulatory sign. Um, I think this is resolved, and earlier you had a discussion about maximum distance from the street from which the sign would be installed. This is a particular property at Fuller Field where we do want to put the sign not at the street, we don't want to have a sponsor sign blocking the entrance sign, we want it back. So if we delete that provision, I think that is a plus. My last one, uh, referred is related to the size of the sign, uh, for a non-regulatory sign. It is described as a maximum of five feet. I strongly recommend you consider increasing that to maybe seven feet, and my rationale for that is five feet is what, here? If you, if we're going to put this on city property, it has to be maintained, we can't have the sign at ground level for mowing purposes, so you're essentially limited to a very small area in which to, and, and, you know, include your sign, essentially from, say, two feet off the ground to five feet off the ground. And to continue with the style of the signs that we have in Fuller Field, it limits the space even further, we have a very narrow sign, twelve-point font to recognize somebody who gave us two hundred and fifty thousand. Um, gave us, I mean, the city, not, not me. So I would just recommend that we, I'm not, I, ten feet is too tall, I'm totally fine with that, um, but I would recommend we increase that by a bit so that we can make proper use of that in the sign. Uh, with that, you know, the, my main reason for being here, as I said, uh, is for the Fuller Field, I represent friends of Newburyport Track. We worked with the city on this project for years, and it's been a shame that we have not been able to recognize who's who contributed significantly to that. It's long overdue, and this ordinance, uh, I fully support with the changes that I suggested, because I think it gives us that opportunity, so. I appreciate you all digging into the details, that will put my pen signed up.
Thank you.
Mr. Lieutenant.
I know. Any other comments from the public? Just we can close the public comment.
Right, bringing it back in.
So are we? Any other discussion?
Following up on that comment, um, that, that is, to me, the same type of thing as I was talking about, something is not near the street, it's of less concern to us than this. Other than, it's not, say, it's not your property, or the property. So if something is setback away, maybe there's some way to, to address that.
Sorry, you mean the size, what do you?
Size or height, you know, whatever it is, I mean, if something is, if something is, you know.
I'm not myself particularly, went into the five feet versus seven feet, it's not, that's significant in my view to make it, I, I don't know, if Jennifer or, or if you have other, other concerns on that, I think.
May I, I, the, the benefit of the planning board and city council, I would like to address some of the comments that we're reading. I, item M on page five is actually where this particular, um, desired sign was, was covered.
Yeah.
Um. It's a, it's an interesting question, uh, municipal versus city-owned. Uh, we might own some city, we, the city might take ownership of a property, um, that's not municipally used, and that's the only reason I can think of a distinction. Um. We could clarify what a municipal property means.
I think, yeah, I, I'm forgetting that, I don't see any distinction there between city-owned and municipal, like.
I'm just saying.
I could use the term city-owned slash operated mainly because of something like the waterfront trust property, thinking about the fact that's technically not owned by the, we can debate whether that's an extension of the city or not. But another entity that we actually operate on, so.
I think we could say city-owned or operated, operated, and you can get rid of the municipal.
Eddie, I don't give any suggestion of Perkins on that.
That's, that's up to you.
Okay.
The only other instance, example of that, from what I understand, that the, the property next to Perkins Ball Field is rented by the city, it's not owned by the city.
Uh, that, that would be operated at least, yes, yes. So, uh, do folks feel more comfortable or comfortable with the city-owned slash operated, just using that terminology consistently? That.
I think that provides with the intent of, of.
Okay. I think we'll just carry that language consistently, that we're mistreating.
And then to the comments regarding the height, I think if we, if this board were to, um, put some sort of clarification on item M as to the location on the site, perhaps being outside of the front yard setback. Then seven-foot height becomes less of an, of an issue, and it's not then in conflict with the lower street front inch signage identifying a property which we want lower for purposes of street clutter. Um, so perhaps adding a setback criteria to item N allows that sign to be, what, or.
I'm sorry, we, uh, M or? M, M.
M, one, three, five.
Which is actually. Right. So, uh, I guess my question is just, are you suggesting where, uh, the twenty feet, are you suggesting that that be replaced with the front setback, or that? Just what I'm understanding. Are you thinking that the twenty feet of any property line could be replaced with, with a front setback? Thinking, or am I misunderstanding it?
Twenty feet's probably fine, it's just a small writing, and it's eight thirty, and my eyes didn't see it just then.
I have a question.
And then, again, it's up to, that would satisfy my need to know where it needs, is supposed to go, and the policy is, everybody up here is, you know, you guys make the policy.
So I have a question about L versus M, so in L, you can have a sign identifying the property that's eight feet high, and there's no restriction of where it is. And then the, but the, the, the set M restricts you to five feet, I'm just wondering why there's a difference, why it goes out in the same. Why, why that is one, one bar. Or.
Yeah.
You know, to have, or maybe have, yeah, maybe it could both be, I'm not sure. What the purpose, what the difference, the distinction between the eight-foot sign that, it's, the sign in, say, Fuller Field, it can be eight feet high, if the owners can only be five feet.
So the two sections are separating regulatory and non-regulatory.
But it's not regulatory, it's just, it said, EG, including property or facility identification. So it's not really regulatory, yeah. You can take out the word regulatory, and you could include it. Somehow incorporate financial contributions.
Is there a visual facility site?
Yeah.
Yes.
There you go. It, uh, it seems like we're heading for another, right?
Well, there's certainly the market, I guess the question is, in terms of, um, handling the amendment, do we want to, is, is a question here, keeping it open and committing with the planning board? Recommending what was the offer this evening, out to the city council, you know, changes forward, committee. While it's really going, but, but play with separately in the C N L committee, but we can work on the edits and, or, Jennifer, I think, should, we should, we'll work it up with the feedback every year. Um, to return that, any question, I guess, does it come back to the playboard, or is it taken with those edits, the suggestions to the city council there? That's just a question, whether you keep the hearing, which then dictates the clock, uh, that the council.
Well, isn't it ninety days after the hearing? When do you get it up?
Then it's up to you to.
You're satisfied that it's, I'm sent to the address.
So, it's, it's.
Also happy, also happy. With Rick after the Mark up and, and the chair, I'll be written. To see.
Over here.
Which would memorialize, I think, some of the, the comments that were made this evening, I think, to, sort of, helping that.
So the question is, whether you, whether you come with a draft, or whether you come with a report to the city council.
Right. And, and the market. Right, and the market shows those changes, just, it's really just a procedural timeframe, sort of question between how, you know, if we were able to circle back and provide to the council the updated version that you were adopting. Versus a consideration to hearing here before taking back to the city council.
I think part of that is whether the city council needs to act soon, or whether they're ready.
No, we're, we're beholden to the timeline, we've, since tonight, the hearings start, and we have ninety days from tonight.
If we, if the planning board was hearing, we'd have ninety days.
And if they keep it open, then.
There's some desires, I think mainly because of the follow-up, I think, there's a concern there primarily at that front, to be ahead of an amendment that would allow the type of signs there, there aren't, to my knowledge, pressing, you know, applications or so forth, other than the fact that, that this is going to get rid of, or, or obviously reverse that, click language, so the updates here will. I, I.
I think I might recommend not keep it open, and then at your next meeting, see the real deal, and we can join you for that.
Final, correct.
I think that's fair. And then after that, we could probably quote it then as well. And then our ninety days gets.
Right, yeah, that's good. Would you enjoy that one? Because you just think the playbook or, or even, uh, something like the event and it's usually, uh, just not if they were an upper training, they tend together or.
When, when would your meeting date?
So.
Because we're fully wishing, since we've got budget kind of.
If Barb were to look at it between first. Or not that, I guess the only question there is just, uh, do you want to deal with that?
Experiment.
Sorry? Yeah, sorry, I guess it's, so we, so I assume there is a challenge, we talked about that.
So we don't have a budget meeting? A rare evening that we could just, could have planned in more detail.
I think it could be.
Oh, yeah, so you close the hearing, let the clock from the twenty days, issue the report coming out of the beginning of the twenty first. Still leaves lots of time for the council to, okay. So. Okay.
So, can, can I have a motion?
But I would, for those, the, the planning of the hearing and continue the consideration of the ordinance who are May twenty first meeting.
Second, second. Yeah, we have, we have six, so we can do this by show and follow those. Both.
I'll work with Rick in the chair. I'd love to, uh, like, uh, both in the mark up, can you? There.
Like hearings, we still need the, right?
Um, it still makes sense. Yeah. It's not necessary, but it's still. It's beneficial, I guess, just.
Okay, thank you. All right. And that was so shortly. So, let's move on to, to go to the both thing.
Hey, um, I just, uh, yeah, sorry. Um, so floodplain overlay district regulations, just a freehold view. Um, this is really dictated by the federal government. Most of this, there's not a lot of latitude for us to make adjustments. Um, but we tried to basically provide language that federal government requires. Um, in brief, the purpose is to satisfy, um, in our floodplain district regulations, which are already developed previously with the courts of the regulations. They have new stipulations. They want local communities to adopt. Um, it's, one, there's always an update periodically to the maps. That's standard, but there's also additional text that went out um, from the federal government, just to make sure that people understand what the requirements are and how they do accommodate. So here, it's mainly important for, to apply to the national flood insurance program, which we record it to many lines with. Um, and it allows profitable property owners to get insurance, right? So we don't want to, uh, cause global debt. Um, this is pretty typical. Uh, most communities just follow this procedure. Unfortunately, we'll say this is a local planner. The federal government does not just say, here's a requirement, it's like it is across everybody, you ask the requirement, and it's very coherent. What they do is they say every local community has to do this on their own. And so you run, run into basically a patchwork of very similar language, doing the same thing, but other things thrown in there all over the Commonwealth. It's a little bit confusing, I think, in both that way, but, um, but that's how it works across country. Every, you know, community that's compliant with this program, uh, to mitigate developments that might be problematic in hazard zones, has to adopt these standards. So, um, not a lot of flexibility for the substance that might have to be changed here. And we have to adopt these changes by July eighth, uh, to be in compliance. Um, it minimizes future risks. So the federal government, basically in providing insurance, providing assistance during storms and things like that, wants to make sure that we're not encouraging development in hazard front areas. Um, fairly similar, I would say, to the sort of water and sewer system, uh, sewer system, except to the island where there was an administrative assignment with D P saying, we don't want to see future development expansions of that nature. Um, of any significant nature of the island because it's bare beach and a hazard area. Uh, here we see sort of a parallel, federal government wants to make sure that we're, we're doing our best practices, so to speak. Um, so the bare updates to the maps and then a couple of standards in the text. Um, this updates the text itself, I'll show the map piece in just a second, but the updated pieces in the text. Um, reference to the new FERC maps, the federal, uh, insurance rate maps. Recognition of the applicable districts in the rate board. There are a bunch of other types of districts, A one, A, A through thirty, things like that, that the federal government recognizes elsewhere. We only need to list a bunch of relevant new report. So we see that in the markup. Um, just to keep it a little clearer for our local reading purposes. Um, additional terms and definitions are now required by FEMA. So we've had to insert those. Um, again, they're very strict on what they think those terms should be. Uh, new section had to present relocation of a few provisions, uh, just based on what they required us to do and where things would then make a little worse place. Um, we have to designate a local floodplain administrator. This is really just codifying something that already happens, which is that the building commissioner looks to make sure that people are doing a bit of construction. Uh, commissioner and inspector, uh, make sure that people are doing the proper construction in those districts. I think obviously helps in harder review of these permits and we help to make sure that the maps are day, we use, uh, my map and the layers that you're seeing on there to, uh, determine where properties fall in terms of their zoning districts, the floodplains, uh, zoning districts or sub-districts are just part of that. So I think there's an overlay. Um, and so the certain stipulations for construction, um, and limitations for construction and hazards. Um, purpose required for all the work. We have stipulated the purpose required. Uh, you might think that's obvious, but the federal government wants to make it clear. And then, uh, they also wanted some additional languages time around, just making it clear that there are certain, uh, professionals that are entitled to do the data analysis that the like commissioner really is looking at here, rather than sort of anybody, I mean, and, and they just wanted to stipulate this is the particular protocol for that. So it's really one of the certified professionals that are doing the hydrologic, the hydro, hydraulic analysis that might be associated with, uh, of this. Um, this is just a graphic showing the map side of it. So, uh, this map doesn't show the tiles of our justice, but it gives you an idea of how the federal government has divided and recorded into tiles. And so what we have in our office now is, uh, the the maps themselves are, they traditionally came out as hard copies. It looked like this. We have the hard copies. We just got it, gave it straight in our office. Uh, but most people are just going to go online. They're going to see either the PDFs, but more importantly, they'll go to my map, which is the city's mapping, uh, platform that we use the regional planning agency. It's piggybacked on our website and we basically put the layers on there. We took the raw data layers, put them on our website and now you can uh, see them there. So I'll show just a second, just a snapshot of, of what that looks like. And folks have questions, you can let me know. Um, but this map here is the same timing, uh, of new report. Doesn't show the, of a photograph. But in yellow, I just highlighted the ones that, uh, where map changes are being done. So they've really done updates, the riverine portion, uh, you can't see it very well as that, but the riverine portion, uh, they've updated. They have really done the ocean side. You have the gray ones. So, uh, that's something that we expect. Uh, I've talked with them maybe sort of five years now, it's like that timeframe, we might expect more, you know, possibly substantial changes or something more of interest there. There's not a lot of changes that were done in the maps of this, this area here, frankly, the maps. Um, and I'm just going to show in a second a couple of highlights of, uh, this shows a municipal property and what we see. So this is actually, um, with the root one bridges in the far right corner of this screen here. So this is cashman park. Um, then what you see here is with the old delineation, uh, the two thousand twelve map, this area, two thousand twelve and two thousand fourteen are the dates of the tiles right now. Um, you see a little bit of approach with it, um, further from the update of this map. So a little bit further inland. Um, and again, this isn't addressing all the future seal rise, you know, impacts. You might see where things might get worse to future flooding. This is addressed based on trends and predict, you know, some of those predictions of, uh, trends today. Um, another example is just over by Spring Lane, uh, down at the Water Tree Facility, which is right here. And this is the Woodyer Bridge, nine eighty-five. Um, you see a little bit further encouragement there. Um, and so they, they take into account that, that pod could get inundation. We have a burn there and we talked before about, you know, possibly, um, building that or whatnot. So again, uh, this is simply a notable area. Everything else is, is really what you're seeing is along the river's edge, little slivers like this, expecting increasing or adjusted. And all that can be basically seen on the lineup, um, layers. You have to basically keep on the hold and add new ones because FEMA did not issue a clean layer with everything together, unfortunately, just yet. We're trying to sort that out, uh, the data a little bit delayed and, uh, buggy. So what we have is you have to turn on the both layers in order to see if the old, uh, layer creates new ones. We will rectify that when we get the clean layer, I'll work with FEMA, but, um, they're just a little bit late on that. Um, this is the downtown and more just for lust of purposes. Um, they didn't really change the, this downtown area out to the ocean. So what we see is the sort of existing flood zones of the area. Uh, we can make up as a letter shading of a boundary right there. Um, but with the seal rise projections, just as the distinction, we see, you know, inundation pushing further up, water street, mermaid street, um, you know, that's where it's going back up to. Um, in the future, uh, projections and the flood hazard areas is, is sort of move upland um, from that. So, you know, we talked about twenty seven to your two hundred. We're seeing more flooding happening, you know, up towards mermaid street, up towards water streets, or where there used to be warms here and the water used to come up to this, to those streets. Um, it's sort of pushing back up there, you know, with this war. So, in essence, that is, uh, in essence, what this amendment is for the map. Um, has to be adopted by July eighth, um, and we're brought back to FEMA, then we're in compliance with these stipulations. The rest of it is, um, is the text side of the ordinance, which we have to take out of the detail, but if you have questions. Uh, I did push out a few edits, minor, relatively minor edits to this, but um, in the, uh, sponsored version, uh, in this case, removing the term basic counting, not necessary, it's not the, the arm, but it's just not necessary. Um, again, this was based on our feedback from, uh, FEMA liaison. Other change was down here, um, this, because of the way that the U P was requiring the text and where it was going, it resulted in some duplication of, uh, they want to result in some duplication of ordinance. So here we're just removing a duplication, uh, with its structure. So because it's, it's captured elsewhere. So we take rid of that, we get rid of that paragraph of the data. And this becomes, um, a section that's dealing with the data that someone's looking at. So in this case, what, who's, how is data interpreted essentially, or a number of A zones and within subdivisions? That's what this section is dealing with. It basically specifies exactly as FEMA was it, how, um, the, the basis for developing the elevation of residential structures and how the data is provided for a subdivision larger, developing a subdivision. Further on, uh, the, there was a requirement, as you mentioned, for floodplain administrator to be identified. While it is true for all practical purposes in most communities, like the building office and planning office are working together to implement this. We deal with mapping side, we deal with the zone board side of it. They're often do for doing most of building construction permits and whatnot. Um, our conservation, uh, agent, we're playing that position right now, but that person would obviously play a role in this as well, looking at that. Uh, but in essence, here in the federal government wants us to identify one singular, uh, party who is the point person for this. So that's what they call it, like the administrator. Um, we're doing a lot of this sort of proactive things or sort of public education things, the mapping and coordination with federal agencies, state agencies about these local code amendments. But the building commissioner is obviously doing the actual, um, compliance of the building code. Um, you know, looking at the construction standards and that's typically a basis to, to, uh, have that person already really serving the capacity to do that. So we, for all practical purposes, have the building commissioner and inspector reaching out to planning offices to confirm any plans and interview to get input. But in essence, it's, it's really just more or less the process to do. Um, and then we have to stipulate with more explicit verbiage in the ordinance, that permits are required for all that development in the floodplain overlay district. So again, this is language that they want us to put in there, saying that permits are required for all that, of it, and all of it. Um, and they also wanted to put in some language, uh, stipulating that an applicant is applying for a permit for that work would have to basically attach line and they have to find and attach any associated state permits, things that might be relevant. So for instance, if they have a chapter ninety-one permit, uh, you know, things like that, they would have to show that they've well, other agencies. I happen to do that's a little bit bureaucratic. They have this sort of circular checking that, you know, there's a lot of things. Um, sometimes it's beneficial, sometimes it ends up being a little bit circular and bureaucratic. Here, it seems to be a little bit more bureaucratic, it might be, but, but it's, so here, it's just the building commissioner would say, you know, upload those things. A, a lot of the other ordinance permissions don't change. The floodway development permitted. Um, we took out some texts in that section and in essence, this, uh, because, you'd look at it, um, the main adjustment that was made in this section since the original sponsor, that is really just adding headers to the subsection. Uh, and this is actually dealing with how, um, we, how the, uh, data is interpreted or used in that floodway area. But also who can provide that hydrologic and hydraulic analysis. So here it's, it's got to be by, um, you know, according to, and as a standard engineering practice. Uh, so this is basically the standard for the language the federal government wants us to use to say how we can, uh, take that professional, but it's like saying you, you only a simple engineer can look at this. So, um, both standard terminology for that. We also took out some of the FEMA flood zones that we don't actually have in the report, given there's sort of standard references. We don't have them in our city, so we don't need to reference them. Um, and again, just implication of that, that same sort of pool of spaces we don't need. Districts we don't use. That's, that's it.
So one question, the floodplain administrator, you, you stated, just to make sure it's clear, it is the building commissioner and there is no additional.
It's the same work they're already doing.
It's not like it's added tasks.
Correct. And we actually, I had a conversation actually earlier today with both Rick and Dennis, the building commissioner and inspector, just to walk through some of this because it's completely understandable. Um, the bureaucratic way that, you know, people start pushing up and down. Finally, they're saying we want a singular point person, but there's also this recognition that that person is going to be coordinating with the departments and agencies, people work, planning offices are often the ones who are going to be the actual overall maps and, you know, city clerk is also going to be pointing to across the hall and say, go to the planning office, look at those maps, right? Makes more sense. So, uh, the federal government wants us to be able to say that these plans are available in several different departments, but in reality is people are always going to go to planning office to get that stuff. And frankly, they're going to go right to our website. They're not going to bother to sit down because they get everything, try to be uh, at home. So, um, so yes, they understand, uh, their role and we understand our role. We deal with things like the zoning map amendment, coordination with FEMA and the D C R, part of the piece there. They deal with the actual review of permits for construction, you know, so there's an understanding of that. Despite your language of the federal.
Just one question. Um, so the the riverine um,
Yeah.
tiles were changed, but the coastal tiles were not changed. So just a verification to the coastal tiles. Also now still have a date of July eighth, twenty twenty five?
No, they still have the old date.
So maybe you should include that. You're just referring to the July eighth date.
Um, yeah, actually, it's, I think. Yeah, the, our FEMA rep had reviewed this and spoke up with this, I think that. I'll check with them. They, they preferred and they actually, uh, they reviewed this, they were comfortable with this language here, but I will check with them. I see your point, which is the fact that some of the earlier tiles aren't that. I think the way that the program is looking at is, um, those tiles are not changed, so they're carrying over. But I will ask them if they have thoughts on, um, on adding some verbiage that to make it clear that we have, we still have, where those tiles were not changed, the two thousand twelve and two thousand fourteen dates for the tiles. One of the things that they, they took away was the requirement that we list every tile, uh, in the section. Um, so, but to your point, I'd ask you, uh, if they have any concerns about that.
Any other question?
Double comma.
We should open the public comment.
We've included the public comment.
Any other discussion? I think, I think giving the, given the timing on this, which seems much more. Should, we should move this along. So if we could have a motion. Like, maybe.
You have to, both, okay. You can recommend, favor, um, the amendment contingent on.
With my application of the age.
With us, yeah, yeah. Also.
You can put the public to.
Seven, I can.
All this in favor?
Aye.
And we should adjourn.
Seven to second.
All this is later.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. We have all done.
General business. Google minutes, we can do April second. We cannot yet do April.
I was like, don't look at me.
Um, I've given you comments on the second. I think Rick has.
You said.
Yeah. Actually, what I said is Rick's comments are also my. Actually, what I said is Rick's comments are also my. So can I have a motion to approve the minutes of April?
I'm moved to approve the April second minutes with the amended.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? So. You. Then sorry. Any other items?
Uh the only thing I would just go and sorry, unfortunately, we will be doing a couple more something amendments, we'll keep doing that the rest of the year. But um but we do have two map amendments that are expected to go into council at the next meeting, so. Um those we're expecting, I think, in uh July second meeting or the July sixteenth meeting uh to be determined shortly. Um we will grow on that agenda at the beginning, those two map changes, uh I'll push out the the maps, but they are basically changes on Low Street. Um to rezone property residential um in the case of near the Koyt Park Lane area. Rezoning some properties uh from the residential one district to residential two, so up zoning uh that south of Low Street. Near Koyt Park Lane, we'll see whether that, you know, we can discuss that one. Um I'm not as keen on that one as as the other one, the other one is uh also on Low Street, but over by uh between North Holland and South Side of Low Street, but. Um in the business park, so it's uh basically rezoning that corner of the business park that's closest to the schools and the neighborhoods. Reden where the churches, for instance, rezoning that corner presidential, so that in the future, if those properties are redeveloped, they could still already have homes on Low Street. But the churches, for instance, are properties uh that they become residential, you know, industrial uses dumping out into those streets. So the business park was defined as a large rectangular, it's outlined, you know, a long time ago. But here, given the nature of those areas today, it seems to make more sense that we encourage residential uses, you know, dumping out of those streets. So uh partly based, I think, where uh requests from the property resident corner who've been wired by it, and partly um thinking about the logic of of having, say, the church properties redeveloped in industrial in the future. Um seems to make sense that we were uh turned that into residential, so in this case, we are one of the lower nets residential, that's the same as uh across Hill Street. Uh we'll I'll push out those, they would actually be going to pack it uh was we, so I, you know, want to make sure this uh goes in there. I'll push out those map changes, we can take those together and decide, I could think the city council should have got those. Uh the one of them, the second one I mentioned is one that the office is recommending, the other one, they can work out certain sort of debatable whole of that exactly. Um with the. Land use. Policy policies. Uh mainly because we've already talked about pedestrian crossing concern that Low Street is going to school, and so. The idea of encouraging more of a center street, knowing that that is right, attributed to that, maybe debatable, um you know. Where in some places in the opposite center street may not have as many concerns, but here, given um we had some development of Koyt Park Lane, we've had a little more pedestrian traffic. Just begs the question, we encourage more on that.
Would that amendment have on where the possible highway site is, is that included in that district?
Uh oh, great question, yeah, so uh the one that's close to North Holland is not, it does not include that parcel. Um it only includes just north of that, so going closer to Hill Street, so it does not include that parcel, and that parcel will still be industrial. And that's the district in which uh your services is permitted, so even though that would be, you know, somewhat dealt with, that would not change. The vote has this, yeah. Yeah, doesn't nothing affect you? Doesn't jeopardize. Good, nothing confusing that.
But you can add science to your. If I have them, they could only be.
Can we recommend other changes to that kind of zoning change?
Yeah, oh, sorry, great question, uh yeah, so um when the, that's a good question, so when the zoning changes come in, we try to write the legal advertisement as broad as possible encompass what is being proposed, but also allow flexibility for general. Where it is supposed to be proposed, for us to modify, maybe, you know, you want to change what the zoning designation is slightly or modify. It's a little tricky because um trying to define what the proposal is and not going too far, that'd make it so so sweeping that you can't. So um we'll try to, with the advertisement explained, it's rezoning this property here, the general concept is this, but. Um if we want to do like a larger change in the business park affecting other properties, you know, further down, which is another wall, it's another wall, sort of, you know, discussion involves other things. That would really be beyond the scope, I think, of what we're getting putting compass in this change here. Uh because in the initial proposal and the advertisement would be not broad enough to encompass things so large as like changing down like Parker Street and. All the uses and things there, that would be a different, in some sense, be a different change, it would be harder to really advertise this one to encompass something that large. There are artists that dive into a much larger scope, I think, uh so.
The one I have in mind is changing the lots along Water Street by Joppa that are.
Okay.
Conservation instead of R two.
Yeah.
It's going to be R two.
Yeah.
Instead of conservation zone.
Okay. Okay.
You know, between. Between where Union Street comes out of.
Yeah. Street and. Maybe, I'm not going to happen to take it, by the way, if you want to take a look at the mapping, put them together and see what makes sense there, then that could be, uh it may not be the same agenda, it's like. But we could, this also, we played with general, but we could put together maps, and this suggests, you know, this is a recommended change or not, so. Uh whether it's that one or, I'm not going to take a look at that and put something together to to illustrate, you know, what's being suggested there, and we can forward that along as a recommendation, even if there isn't an initial clause.
In that regard, I'd really like to bring back the idea that I presented a couple of years ago about the. Again, the graph for the.
Yes.
Area and and making that more of a transitional zone and then.
Yes.
The type of businesses.
Agreed.
I could come back and, I mean, obviously, we don't want to do it. For a bunch of other stuff, but maybe starting sometime this summer, we can start looking at it.
Yep.
I have a couple of questions, um three questions, actually, and they're all related to how's. One, and I'll ask all of them, you could. One, what do we know about what's happened to K? Two, what do we know what's happening?
We finally in the next month, there's a ZBA.
Okay, sorry, okay, that's that's going forward. What's happening at Miko, do we know?
Uh right now, I'm not sure if we're going to be putting shovels around this season or not, we were expecting that, but it's still to be determined. So I will, of course, inquire of them again, uh but it was sort of in limbo still, whether or not they'll be putting shovel around this season, that was the expectation, you know, it's been given. But we're there now, and so what is, you know, I will ask, I don't know, you know, the.
Is there a reason why they're delaying?
My understanding is it probably deals with the economy at the financing side.
Carries.
And and I definitely got nervous the last, you know, month or two. So uh, you know, we would have been going, they were concerned about previous, you know, previously, and so the recent couple of months has probably not helped that at all. Uh so I can inquire, but I imagine it might be still a little bit on the fence because of some of that.
And my third question is, have you heard any interest at all in our MBTA? District of.
Oh, great question, um no, we have talked with folks, and it was coming from, this is, we have not sent anybody's. Jennifer, one question, she has not mentioned anybody coming in to talk to her about those thus far on that, but uh we haven't seen anybody specifically say, I'm interested in this parcel. Um but obviously, we are, we'll, you know, let you know, we're certain, we just expect to go in a certain parcel.
Yeah, you hear about these communities that have adopted MBT zoning and stuff is being built, so just interesting that we're not.
Yeah, it's surprising to me that we haven't, you know, effectively, just for some of those Parker Street properties, I would think, you know, it'd be very quick for someone to, you know.
Easy.
Yeah, I mean, and and it's possible that Jennifer or somebody just egliding, you know, questioning, I'm sort of initial zoning determination what's possible there, but. Um then she probably also asked a lot of me because we'd be dealing with here the forty hour personal process. Not as yet, but I'm sure.
But I'm just going to ask a fourth question, like Rick, um any any word on New England development?
Oh, uh so we've been working on uh possible changes for rezoning for water from West. Terms for whatever redevelopment might be, you know, agreement type stuff. That hasn't made its way to the city council yet, it's still in progress, being worked on. Um so there isn't anything that's been sponsored yet by the council, there is the possibility of something like that, but we don't, I'm not aware of a council sponsor who's ready, private and ready to go. Package like that, uh but we did, I've planned it all myself, uh and the administration have been talking with AD about possible changes. Um I think in in large part, it's consistent with, we talked about, you know, some years ago. Uh there happens or we supply this to their plan and attempt to address some concerns, bring buildings, you know, first from the water's edge and things like that. Uh but all that still remains to be seen, when do we come forward, and what specific plans we could see from them in conjunction with.
So is it consistent with?
Some feedback that came.
The last presentation, the. At least the one I saw, but there, it has to be a year.
Uh it's evolved a little bit since then, where they've tried to pull some of the buildings or the mass wave to the water's edge. Um but it's not, you know.
And the 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 other important thing that that I think we talked about months ago was the importance of Warp Street.
Uh yes.
Street and.
Right.
Um the network of streets that connect all of those blocks.
Yeah.
That to me is very important to make that water traffic live.
Yeah.
Are they?
They've partially, they they approved that. For the east-west piece that uh as well as I would say these are ways to, you know, perpendicular ways to water, and it's a recognition. Um but the density will probably be the more difficult thing, and it's still the end of the day, books.
But they they did not. Make Warp Street continue. Market Street over to like the Tuscan Seagull.
That's a stretch.
Version that I.
Right, right.
And I think, you know.
I have not seen a plan.
Talked about that, I think it's very important.
Yeah, I have not seen a plan yet that makes that perfect, uh it's it's migrated in that direction, but uh but. So still something we'll have to stress more.
Do you have an opportunity to comment on this again before it disappears into the city council?
I I don't have the, I mean, right now, it's in the discussions going right now between administration and the developers, so I don't know at this point when there'll be something that's either. The council, the administration to.
But there's a zoning amendment eventually, and that would be our opportunity to.
To, oh, for sure, yeah.
And and do you know whether they are using the, with the U or you, are you using? The outline that we we presented at the end, the, you know, the list of streets and the uh. The standards for streets and everything, is that being.
That's what they're aged them, uh but what they're returning me in terms of the network.
In terms of, because we had a draft zoning.
Yeah.
And it had all the stuff that Rob's talking about, you know.
It's, there's a different version that is being worked on, there are some pieces that are being pulled in, so.
Are they doing it, or do you?
Uh no, right now, the zoning is being drafted by Emily Innis, who I think, you know. Um she is drafting something, it's it's incorporated some designs.
She's not doing the.
For the city. Yeah.
And that's the 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 difficult thing, I think, is when the developer controls the design, and I think we want to make sure the city, you know.
Agreed.
Me and the council.
City agrees.
Yeah, we are, we did, we are, the city agreed. I mean, there certainly needs to be more dialogue, because it didn't make it. You know, between city council, like, uh it's not, it's not, it's been for a while now, it's just. But some of those, to see if there's something that's, you know, their, the mayor and commissioner are comfortable breaking forward. We haven't, as I mentioned, and council, since I've got a package or a ready to go, but.
I think I think there's something like this. I mean, there's. We have a lot of problems with some things that come to us after the roaring sun. I think something like this, before something gets introduced to the council, there should be some kind of workshop where we sit down and talk about it, because otherwise, we're going to be fighting after a very bad battle.
I cannot stress enough. The importance of Warp Street.
Yep. I will relay.
This seems very, this is, this is a very fundamentally different project.
Yep.
If you don't allow the public and traffic down the road.
Yep.
We feel doesn't function. We're going to be, you know, the public say, yeah, it becomes a private presidential development, it's a completely wrong history.
Yep.
And it's not what the city is looking for.
I will have that advocate.
Yeah.
At the city, because we're not in a position to do this.
Yeah. Yeah, I I mean, I'm going to.
It's, you know, it's off in somebody else's hands and and, you know. May maybe the points that we have been stressing aren't really being paid attention to, and I think that is a very serious situation.
I I mean, the team internally, definitely.
To Rick's point, I would hate to have this come back to us and it's a done deal and it's too late to change it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that we're there, and they they they, for something to make its way to the council tag, and there needs to be a sponsor. So the there has to be a comfortable level with both, next of an entire, dealing with something like this, and the maps and the density, you know, if there's a master tunnel plan or something of that nature being incorporated. I don't think we're there, so while there is, there are ideas, some sort of details being back and forth, the sort of deal we might book up with, you know, and the administration might book with. That is still a long way away, I'd say, for.
There's layers of interpretation through all of these documents.
Yeah.
But there's a basic framework to the development, which is what we've been talking about.
Right, so.
Years now.
Yeah.
Uh which creates blocks.
Yes.
Creates streets of certain character that isn't very difficult to define.
Yeah.
That ought to be one of the main cases.
They did try to. Right.
That's certain.
Right, and we we may not think it's perfect, but they did try to come further with that blocking network uh accessibility side of it, may not be as far, may not be perfect for me, as you know, perspective. They did try to come further with that piece, uh I don't know as as well or as much details, like the ordinance, that's something that's a provider detail. Um definitely do, but I think they've tried, and he is trying to make some progress in addressing some of those concerns, we'll still have the same. Overall concerns, probably debates about, you know, density, how many parking spaces are needed to the site and so forth, but that, but all that stuff, obviously, still be saying. Uh I'll relay the concerns again, of Warp Streets as well as the desire to.
Perhaps it would be appropriate to have Emily come to what we need to present before even before it gets to the point of. I don't think so, see where we are.
Yeah. I'll relay the concern, I can wonder for all the first strings, uh yeah, but I will certainly recommend that, the same with you are, which is, you know. Um the earlier discussion, the earlier the coordination, the earlier everybody's sort of the same page, and it's.
It's got to be dusted on.
Well, they can't bypass.
They could, they could come back here when they'll.
Be a. On the side.
Everything. Got to go forward with this, the interpreter. Yeah, it's.
It has to be, it has to be clever.
I think the council will want that same sort of, you know, you know, dialogue and concern and deal with some of these details, so I think to some extent. The fact that it's not, you know, when it comes back is an indication that there's still, you know, support that needs to be, but um but I agree, I agree, I'll circle back and make some suggestions for you. Together.
It would be great if you come.
Doing.
I I would say it this way, several members of the board have spent many hours.
Yeah.
And I would say, like, if you communicate that to them.
Yep.
If they come to us not having recognized the many hours that we've put into it. We're going to be fairly.
Yeah, I'm more than happy to, I've been doing a charade, walking through the, you know, potential edits or thoughts and all that stuff, I'm just. Being curious. And they're respectful. I will express the concern of relating parallel over here.
One more, one more comment. MBTA, um from the state level. You know, we've seen a couple of communities say, no, we're not visiting, Rowley said it, Yellen said it. What's the ramifications for that? I mean, we jumped through what we were told is.
Yeah.
What does the state say? And if you don't answer now, tuck your head, but.
Yeah.
At the next meeting, I'd be interested to know.
Yeah.
What that.
It's really up to the state's administration and housing level communities, but in essence, they they wanted to. They've been expressing that very clearly, I'll leave it to them in terms of litigation and, you know, and files and that. Um we can be uh taken accordingly, you know, responsible, because we had a fight, it ended up being that, you know, poor violation of the statute itself. Um the more obvious one that they've identified is lost grants, any grants that are in place with the state. Possibly, you know, jeopardized, meaning could be contracts are signed that, you know, that new brands are ineligible, uh so that obviously is a factor, um and. And then there's the uh invalidation of, you know, if if we were not to. Complying with them to invalidate a law ordinance because it doesn't comply in some way, meaning you have, you know, that's a little more tricky or complicated. The ADU one would be a little more obvious how that applies. The overriding deciding exactly where the density goes, if a community doesn't do it, it's a bit harder, so they've been saying, you know. The courts obviously saying, we're directing the city or town to adopt, you know, and something that, yeah, the details will have to be worked out. So um it's really the loss of the state funding, possible, you know, going to court, spending legal fees, you know, getting by in some sort of, I'm not sure, I guess that would pay out in terms of a dollar amount per se. Uh but certainly the cost expense of defending it, you know, would be something. Bring up, so I do think we're in a better position, and obviously, it wasn't a significant lift for us to comparison to some of the areas, but uh. Um but they would use grants, and they're certainly spending ways depending on.
I think Milton is is in full, and then the court cases have been postponed to the normal. But the um. But some of the, some of the ones that have. Have uh during the death, have come back with a revised one, and improved, and Marble. Just had a second time to improve and improve, they they. Disapproved it the first time. Second time. Wes, that's what's going to happen, Wes, Wes, you read this. And they're kind of kind of, a different, a different proposal of all.
And they're even misleading, oh, we can change the statute to give more time for communities, I'm not saying that, you know, when it's waiting, you know, but.
I think I think this, this December thirty-first is going to be the big.
The big.
The big one, because everything has to.
Okay. You know?
Want to play a game?
I'm glad to see you. Right on second. Nobody wants to.
Second.
Was it David?